Ready? It's nine thirty, I will call the meeting to order, we have a quorum, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Say it.
A motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I. I will recess the regular session and take a motion to open the public hearing on DD fourteen for a presentation of the engineers' report for proposed tile improvements on.
I'll motion to open up the period.
I'll start it, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Alternative to the engineers.
Alright. My name is Jacob Hagan.
I'm Golden Gunny Ann.
We're just gonna just bear with us for a little bit. Having a little technical difficulties.
Well, I still have one in my outbox, does it all the time.
Sam, if you bring up the agenda on the county website, you probably can click the link there. It should be.
Forty people are on soon, right now.
There's three or four, I think is what I saw.
Yeah, I don't know. It's happened.
Yep.
That would be under. Would you department.
Meetings.
If you go to meetings and agendas.
Or surprises. Meetings and agendas.
I'll put on the middle one.
While you're waiting, that's Val, she's the drainage clerk. For those of you that don't know.
You may have talked to her already.
Recording in progress.
I'm sorry, I thought.
There we go. Alright, there's two separate speakers, there's these speakers and those speakers, and we were muting these speakers.
Oh, okay, alright, well, thank you. Ready?
Yeah.
Alright, well, my name is Jacob Hagan, I'm the engineer who signed the drainage district report. I want to thank you guys all for attending. We're just gonna go through. This further proposed improvement project for drainage district fourteen, we're gonna go through it, we'll have some opportunities for questions. At the end, we'll have more question, answer, discussion, and we'll read the objections also. Looking at Colton, do you wanna get started, Colton?
Yeah, so, like you said, here we are for drainage district fourteen, before we get into particulars on fourteen, we're gonna talk about some generalities that apply to all drainage districts. So drainage districts, they're they're legal entities that are made to drain the land, pretty self-explanatory. Yeah, they're legally distinct from counties and cities, and they are de facto owned by the landowners, so landowners are paying assessments, which they pay for the hunk into the district, not county or municipal taxes. Jacob, you wanna hit the slide for me?
Has anyone here ever been to a drainage district hearing before? Okay, so there's a, there's a few people. Here it is.
Yeah, so yeah, Board of Supervisors in this space act as trustees for the district. So, how we ended up here was that a petition was signed, the trustees have to appoint an engineer, that would be us. We've surveyed the lands and facilities of the district, and created a report, the report is valid for ten years, so no matter what happens out of this district, or out of these hearings, you can always go back in the next ten years and use the same exact report, if you wanna say, let's say you wanna do a portion of improvement or something, ten years from now, you can come back and do that. And then, this hearing is scheduled, and you all were notified, and that's how we got here. And our engineers' report, we find it's really long and boring, and that's why we made this PowerPoint, to hopefully express it a little better. So the trustees are conduct, conduct the meeting, so we're sharing the findings of the engineer report right now. After, so there will be opportunities for questions, objections, landowners may file written objections, or anything that goes, anything to a particular member of the engineer's report, really anything in the report. And so, reports can, engineers can recommend repairs or improvements, in this case, we're recommending an improvement, we'll talk about later why we're doing that. No repairs recommended at this time, and then objections must be submitted in riot, writing and submitted prior to the hearing. Go to the next slide, no decisions have to be made today, the hearing can be continued. So objections, with improvements, like the one we're proposing here, there's something called remonstrance, which means that if fifty percent of the landowners owning seventy percent of the land objects to a project, or say a portion of the project, then the project or that portion of the improvement can't go forward, it fails automatically. Barring remonstrance, the trustees have the final decision to be made on what happens within the district. And then trustees have a legal obligation to keep the the district in working order. So if there was a repair recommended, that would be kind of the minimum bar that the trustees would have to meet, according to the code, we aren't recommending a repair here. But we are recommending improvement, as we'll talk about later, so do you have any questions about procedure? How things go forward?
Alright. Then we'll go on to the actual, the actual project now, so here we've got this tilted, so north is on this end, south is down here, here's the Shallow Rock River, and we've, we've studied the existing tile as they are now. That is these black lines here, these black lines with the dots, those are the existing district tile, where they go. You've got lateral four, you've got the main lateral five, you've got this nineteen seventy-six main that was constructed, that effectively cut the district in half. For the south part, the quarry is expanded further when it's flowing on here, so they've eaten some of that tile away. And the south portion, that is still the existing main downstream. We are not proposing any work on this south portion of the district, everything south, I think it's four and fiftieth street.
Yes.
Four and fifty street, there's no work proposed at all. Part of it because that when that nineteen seventy-six went in, and they split the district, that provided instant relief for everyone downstream. Because you've taken that water off of them now, and it serves an outlet for this upper portion. And so this, this tile is, and quarry's been eating away at it, so it's not serving as many acres, so we're not recommending any changes to the south portion. The upper portion, the original coefficient for it. Move on to the next. The original tile was established, the district was established in nineteen twelve, so we're about a hundred and ten year old tile at this point. Construction was completed in nineteen fourteen, and then like I said, nineteen seventy-seven, they put a new twenty-four inch tile. This is how they would have laid it out, this isn't a picture of this actual time, but this is how originally would have been laid, it would all have been laid by hand, two foot clay sections, or maybe some concrete sections that were two feet. Here we just shown the soil maps for this district. You see, the red is very poorly drained soils. Far enough you go, green is excessively drained. What we've seen is that in this, kind of the, the main area of the district that we're proposing is poorly and poorly drained, strained soils. There is, however, this upper portion, there's quite a bit more sand in that, that area, this is proposed possibly annexed ground. So it's a little bit different soil type up here than it is down here, and this main tile is to primarily serve the areas that are more poorly drained, and kind of the meat of the district. You wanna talk about the seat? Now, alright. So what we looked at, was we looked at the existing tile capacity of that existing tile, those black lines that we showed, and we went through, we looked at, here's a south tile, it's, we're shooting for a half inch drainage coefficient, that's been the standard that Iowa State developed in the nineteen fifties. The reason they developed that standard was because prior to that, doing a more diversified cropping rotation, I think, something like Northwood, if you look at your, did everyone get this supplemental report, if you look at the cropping changes in nineteen twenty-five in Worth County, only nineteen percent of their farmland was being used for corn grain, and now we're looking at around over half, half of Worth County's eggland is being used for grain corn, so in the nineteen fifties, they updated that standard, prior to that, the standard was a quarter inch coefficient, they've left it to a half inch, and that's what we've been using, a half inch, ever since the nineteen fifties. We look at this, the nineteen seventy-seven lateral, it had a drainage coefficient of about a tenth. So it was undersized even when they put it in, in the late seventies. That was, a half inch would have been what you were shooting for, and they put it at a tenth. But we can see that even above that, that old tile, you have a fourteen inch tile, serving twelve hundred acres, point oh three percent drainage coefficient, so this was underdesigned even when it was put in, in nineteen eighteen. Or nineteen twelve. And so that's why we highlighted these green areas, as the areas that are of most concern to the district, they're serving a large massive area, and they're severely undersized, you're having less than ten, less than a tenth for all of them, except for the main lateral there. I think you probably can see the effects of that in your, in your farm landscape. Where it's just, it's pretty, it's very undersized, it's one of the more undersized tiles we've actually seen. What we've done, is we're proposing, is there, is there any questions about the existing tile before I get into the proposed tile? Any comments or?
The last meeting we were at, that nineteen seventy-seven, you guys were, I wasn't involved in that, but a lot of people were surprised that, and when I bought my land, I looked at the drainage map, and that, that lateral going west was not on Worth County's, it showed the one going straight south. Even you said it's been eliminated.
Yes.
So, most of you guys know that, was there a meeting on that then, or? How did that happen?
The nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
There would have been a meeting, and it would have had to been approved by the Board of Supervisors. I know at that time, the county engineer was pretty involved in doing a lot of the drainage style projects, so I'm assuming the county engineer was the one who did the engineering for it. I don't remember, I think I remember, I think the county engineer was the one who designed that. I think I remember seeing, the name was small.
Cause I don't believe that's on your tile map on your Worth County site, it still, it still shows the one going straight and south, it's never been updated.
That's probably true, I know the Beacon website, you guys had talked to me about there's hope to this winter, having us go through and update that site, cause a lot of it was using old maps and hasn't been updated quite some time, so there probably isn't, I wouldn't be surprised. What we've looked at, I guess, is there any other questions or comments about the existing, existing tile or existing situation out there? We'll move into proposing, this is a little different route, I know we had a meeting last spring, and I know some of you are, we're seeing some of you at that meeting, we've got a little different routes, a little different situation with what we proposed at that time. So we'll start it off with, the, the orange lines are whatever proposed tiles are. You can kind of see these faint gray, that's their existing tiles. And so we actually, the existing outlet is right down here, right along four and fiftieth, and comes over, we're actually proposing coming up about a quarter, about forty acres nowhere so, twelve hundred feet north of that, where there's a lateral coming in, and that's where we're gonna cut our line, so the the south portion is still being used by that nineteen seventy-seven tile. Because that nineteen seventy-seven tile was big enough to drain this area here, so that way we can try to try to save some money for the district by taking off some land over there, they can use that nineteen seventy-seven tile. Whereas this portion will, will serve the existing area to that half inch drainage coefficient. So we've got the main starting here, outlet in the Shallow Rock River, way across, across the railroad, coming to here, where it starts to branch on. We'll go to the next slide. So here's the lower main, we're proposing a thirty-six inch tile, a little over three thousand feet of it, that'll also include a boring under the highway, that the state will pay for, the state pays for crossings within their highway, right away. And it also will include a boring under the railroad, which the railroad is also, the law just changed this year, that the railroad will, will be required to pay for that crossing as well. That was a pretty fortunate change to the law, but we'll be able to get that railroad to pay for that crossing. And then that thirty-six will run all the way to right there, we've got an estimated project cost for just this portion that'll serve, we've got the whole blue area, it's all the land that drains to that tile. About three hundred thousand dollars for construction costs, or about two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Now, this map includes all this portion of town, I know when I filed the report, we filed a pre-classification map that included all this area up here, the board is, they don't, they don't have interest in the annexing part of town, but we'll deal with that another time, annuations, another hearing, we'll touch briefly on it later. But, we're looking at about three hundred thousand per construction cost to construct this three thousand feet of thirty-six inch tile. Is there any questions, I'll go through all the laterals, the other proposed laterals, is there any questions on this lower main or comments? On just the lower main section, this thirty-six inch proposed.
And if at any point you're unsure where your land is in regard to, cause these maps are still kind of hard to see even projected. Please come see us after the meeting, and we'll do our best to help us figure out which laterals would serve you.
Alright, we'll move on to the next lateral. So here we've done, we call it the upper main, it would have been the upper main of the old tile, back when this was really constructed, it went straight south down past the quarry, and further to the south, this would be the upper portion. And this would be that part that was draining, I think at a point oh three currently, is what it's draining at, so this will give it a half inch drainage coefficient. And pretty closely follows the same path as the existing, we kind of straight lined it a little bit, because we're excavators today, we don't have to always put it in the exact low, low, you're not hand digging this, we like to straight line it, to save some cost, by straight lining it as opposed to following every gully along the way, and this would be a twenty-four inch tile for about fifty-two hundred feet. And we've got an estimated cost of three hundred thirteen, three hundred eighteen thousand for construction cost for this portion. Questions on, on this particular one, I know this one's kind of the one that twenty-four inch tile, yep. This one kind of comes up through this poorly drained area, and then stops right before the ground starts to rise up. Any questions on this particular leg of the? So, we'll probably, we'll do evaluation while we're out there, we'll either crush it completely, or we'll leave it and allow it for a private tile to be connected into it, and then interconnected every chance we get, so that it can be used as a feeder line to feed private tile to it, as opposed to crushing the whole thing, but this one, with it being so undersized, I think we'll probably find, it's a hundred and ten years old, we'll probably just end up crushing the whole thing, and connecting all the private tile into it directly. Probably more than likely what we'll, what we'll do, there has been times where we've left it, and just let it serve as supplemental drainage.
The project connects the private tile?
The project connects all the private tile, yep, every tile will be connected embedded in a rock, and we will also get a shot on every one, so when we file our final, final project plans, you'll get, you'll be able to have access to every single tile in your field that's connected to it. And if we miss one, which does happen, once in a while we will miss one, you can let us know, contract will have warranty for one year. We'll have them go out there and hook it in then, cause it, it happens, especially if it's been a dry year, tile's dry, you don't see it. But that is, yep, every tile will be connected, every private tile will be connected into it, cause this, I mean, the whole purpose of these drainage districts is to serve as the outlet for your private tile. We want to make sure that every tile is connected in.
If you have tile maps and then want to give them to us before construction, that would be great.
Here's proposed lateral four, this is on the west side of the railroad. Barely closely follows the existing one, we did cut it off shorter than what the current one is. We made that decision because this is all one landowner, it becomes cheaper typically, just end it and have somebody else and run your own private tiles at that point. And this would be an eighteen inch tile, it would connect into the lower main, down here, run basically north in the northeast, we've got a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar construction cost on this one here. And, all of these, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing deal, you can't just do the lower main, that is always an option to just do the lower main, you can't do, you can't do lateral four without doing the lower main, lower main, if you're gonna do anything, you have to do the lower main, but you don't have to do the laterals, they can all be individually kind of pick and choose based on what those landowners wishes are. Then we've got here lateral five. It's, we've come in right here at the same spot, the upper main comes out, it'll now go east, and then northeast, following closely what lateral five currently is. And it starts off as a twenty-four inch for about, little more, about two thirds of it, or a little more than half, and then the lower, the the upper portion will be an eighteen, so we'll downsize that as needed to get that half inch. And that, that would be an estimated construction cost of a hundred and forty-six thousand. Along with this, we'll say, we have called out places where we would suggest putting tile intakes, you know, intakes are kind of a pain to farm around, but they really do help the system function, when you have more intakes, the better, and bigger intakes drain water faster, so I think we've called out intakes at every, every property line, and I think at every point where there's a connection. It also helps you can see underneath, you can look down and have and see that your water's flowing, if there is an issue, you can, let's say you got a plug up here, you could be able to see that here. When you look down into it, there's no water flowing. That is one thing that we've also called out in addition to the private tile connection. And then, this one's a little bit different. To take water, this portion here of the farmland appears like it could drain either direction. Very low lying area right in here. The private, this area has been a lot of private tile, has been put into this DD five, there's been some private tile on this area that's gone to lateral five. We decided to cut off this portion of the watershed, and send it to DD five. We think that would provide a better outlet for them, they have an outlet closer to them that's better here than trying to go all the way here through the whole system, so we proposed a eighteen inch tile about two thousand feet, that cost them about a hundred thousand dollars. Trying to provide some relief to this air, particular area. I own this pattern tile, pattern tile maps that we were given, it seems to be that there's, there could be, aager tile could be useful over in that area. Any questions about this one, I know, talked to a couple people about this one, are you willing to, okay, yep. And like I said, this one could be some standalone project, if everything else, nobody wants to do anything else, this one could still go do a tiny thing, or vice versa. Yep, so, kind of talked about the board, crossings under the highway, and underneath the railroad, we've got a picture here of how it's, how it's done. DOT always requires all those, we've done a decent number of these borings. They would pay for it, it would be a thirty-six inch steel pipe, we're using concrete pipe for everywhere else, underneath here that we use, we use steel pipe, it's five sixteen inch thick steel. It'd be a cost of a hundred thousand dollars in the DOT. There would be intakes on both road dish then as well that goes into it. The railroad, we are hundred and twenty feet of thirty-six inch, five, five sixteenths inch steel, that estimate cost, hundred and sixty-two thousand, railroad thought I was low on it, and probably, probably in low, they like, they're a real pain to deal with, so it, but we will, we will work our best to make sure that everything that they charge us, we will charge back to them. So that, that will be one holdup, let's say this project, you vote for this project, the railroad permit will take some time, and that may slow things down on how quickly we can move. Other than that, that should be the only thing, permitting wise, that would be difficult for this project. So then.
Let's see.
The next slide. Yeah, go to the next slide, okay. So the total project cost, so we've got total construction cost, if everything goes, we've estimated that a little, about one point one million dollars. Our engineering is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and then legal, finance damages, finance, have all those other soft costs, we've had an estimated about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So our total estimated cost is about one point four million, a little over a thousand dollars per acre, now that's on average, some people will be paying quite a bit more than that, some people will be paying less than that, it all depend on where your land lays. We do have a picture, here's, here's what typical tile looks like when we're putting it in the ground, so it's concrete pipe, eight feet sections. They pull, pull the black dirt first, they set that on the one side, you can see the clay, the underlying dirt's piled on the other side. They, we use a they use a spoon excavator, so you'll end up with this kind of a shape hole. And you lay it right in the clay, and you lay the pipe, and then we wrap, they have every joint wrapped with fabric, try to keep silk out of it. This particular pipe itself doesn't really carry much tile, the existing tile you have out there, two and, two feet clay sections, gap between every one, that'll take quite a bit of water into it, this doesn't take so much water into it, it more serves as a as a conduit to get all your other water out of it, to use, to get your private tile water to this, I mean, there will be some water that'll come through the joints, it won't be the same amount as those existing two foot small pieces.
So to be functional, it has to be tiled into, essentially, it has to serve as an outlet for perforated tile.
Yep, and there will be intakes on it, but yeah, it'll, it's primarily serving as the outlet for your private tile, not as the actual drainage itself. Yep. And there will be intakes on it, but yeah, it'll, it's primarily serving as the outlet for your private tile, not as the actual drainage itself. Uh, and then I think Darnicor estimates concrete pipe at a two hundred and fifty year lifespan, so. We shouldn't have to have another hearing, at least not. That's what they, that's what I know. We get a lot of questions about plastic, using plastic. We don't recommend plastic on. I don't recommend plastic on. County jobs like this. Uh, one is the lifespan is estimated like around fifty years, which I know is. Long enough for most of us, but. I don't like using plastic. Because you have to rock it. You have to bend it in rock. And so that means you're going to help haul rock trucks all throughout your field. All on this path, which rock trucks really add a lot of compaction to it. I mean, excavator. Excavator has very little compaction. Your, your tractor probably compact more than excavator does. So we can keep that compaction less and there's less rock being used. And when you do rock it, the cost bid is plastic. So there's been a big job in the suit. Another engineer did, and the plastic came out to about ten percent cheaper. Than what this is, but that doesn't include that. We're bidding these jobs. They're low bid jobs, so you. You get, you design them. It's idea that a low bid can do the job. And if you. Use plastic, there's more things that can go wrong. Concrete is struc- it's already structural as it is. You can, you kind of screw it up and still make it work. Plastic, that, that envelope has to be tight. Around it, because that dirt is what holds, holds it all together. Holds the plastic in place from collapsing. So you need that and you need the rock. And, um. Or you know, low bid situations. I'd rather just go with the guy. That can a little more bold. And then on top of that, because of that, our, our time would be more. So when we do inspection on these jobs. We're there maybe two or three times a week. For a couple hours. We're not there full time watching them lay every pipe. But this is, it's not worth it from a. District standpoint to watch. Some guy like pipe. We can probably, as long as he's on grade. But if it's rocked in plastic, we're going to have to be there to make sure he actually puts the right amount of black rock on, on it, because it is more of a. It's less structural, structurally secure as concrete is. So our cost would end up going up. By making that a wash from a. Concrete versus plastic standpoint. And I think. You guys would probably rather pay for better product than for our time. Is there any questions about the proposed project? As it is. And then we'll get into more.
We'll get into the, the damages, what, what that amounts to, and then we'll, we'll, we'll show you an economic analysis.
Move over brief annexation and reclassification process. Is that, is there any questions or any comments? I'm going to go back here to the, the map slide. Any? I guess, is there anything? You'd like to see different about this design? Is there, maybe cut them off shorter or anything like that on your particular property or extend it further? Sometimes guys ask for a bigger tile. Any questions or? About the actual design?
Yeah, I have one on that tile that runs into the. Drainage district five.
Yep.
Which, yep, that doesn't benefit anyone but us, does it?
So you want to go to the last slide?
I, I don't see where it does.
So right here, this one, and you're, you own this, this part right here. You own these two properties, I think. This is their property over the way that you see or be north of you. Okay, we. So these people would be provided an outlet. The people who are up north of you provided an outlet close rock closer to them than what they currently have. So they would be able to, right now they'd have to go through you to get to DD five at the time, to get to the outlet. Now with this district title, they could go like their own bank's line and tile under their own bank's line. So that's why we've included. All these acres into this, since that they are what pile is brought, their outlet brought closer to them. Are you talking about? That what you mean by benefiting, that they're also benefiting from it as well?
At one time you had on a map, I saw you had a branch running off of that tile runs to the northeast.
We did, and then we, we ended up taking that one off, but we could add that if the landlords would like to. So if there would be, if there's landowner interest in extending this one further or extending any of these. We can certainly do it. It just, it becomes, once you get. So small, it becomes cheaper just to have private tile plowed. You know, when you're getting to a twelve inch tile, probably just, you can plow that in. Some guys, these number of guys can plow that in. Cheaper than laying an eighteen inch. Uh, so that's what we.
That's kind of my question about that tile. I, I already have a ten inch tile.
Yep. Yep. And that's where. For a ten inch tile. I don't exactly what the capacity of a ten inch versus an eighteen inch.
It's not up to.
Yeah, it's not.
Standard, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, but we, so yeah, this would be. If you're happy with the ten inch and you just want to leave the ten inch and not do this tile. Doesn't hurt my feelings. At all.
Neither.
Yeah, but that's for any of these. If, if you guys are happy with it, the drainage that you have right now, I, I do think. This ten inch, tenth of an inch is, is very low. I would, I would really. Right, it's your money, but I. I think, I think you could see a real benefit by, by upsizing that. I think you really could see a benefit from that. Move on. Yeah, we should, we'll go ahead and move on.
I have a question. Does, how does this? Benefit our land? Angie Wilkins, north of Keenan's there.
The north of Keenan's, like most of the west side of the tracks. And they're on that portion, they have the east side, they kind of.
Cause we already get, you know, every drop of rain that comes across Main Street Northwood dumped on us down there.
And then it sets.
And it sets, because, uh, the water does not go with the ninety degree angle that was put in.
Right. They're right up against the road. They're right here, this. And then on both sides of the tracks, so. Okay, so they're right where the lower main's going through. Yes. And right for lateral five is going through. Okay. So your benefit. Would be, right now you're relying on that nineteen seventy seven tile. In any water that goes south. Down to the county park. By installing this new. Lower main tile. We're providing an outlet. That has a half inch drainage capacity. As opposed to the existing one that has a tenth inch, a tenth inch strip. The existing one has a tenth of an inch drainage capacity. The new tile that'll be running through your property will have a half inch drainage capacity. So you'll be able to hook in. Your new tile, your tile. Uh, the tile will happen, tile with five times more capacity than the current tile. And it also will provide an outlet that all those waters that are coming onto you will also be able to hook into it. And take that water away from your land quicker than what it is being able to take it away now. Is that?
And that will also, the curricular crossing will also be. Is that one?
We, we will still leave that in existence, nineteen seventy seven tile.
But the one that crosses the railroad part way up, is that?
This one here?
Yeah.
We will probably tie this one in before we get to the railroad tracks. That way. We'll just, so there's this, there's an existing lateral like here. That crosses the railroad that right here. We'll tie this one in to our new tile. Okay, so it's not even, that way there's just one crossing for the railroad. We're not having to deal with this water coming all the way back down here. We're just sending it right into the new main. Okay, before it even gets a cross, chance to cross. Okay, so that would benefit, that they take, they were taking that water that's currently going on to them. We're taking it off before it gets to them. Okay. Did that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah.
On your map, we can't see where the, where the new tile is going to run. We're, we're, we're in Texas. We can't come up to the.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
And. Your hand gestures, we can't see, because it doesn't enlarge.
Yeah, um, let's see. Maybe just go to the little main one. Lower main is going to be their biggest benefit. The lower main, you see that red line?
Yes.
That's the new proposed lower main that's going to replace. Are going to add to the nineteen seventy seven main, and that's five times the capacity of the existing nineteen seventy seven outlet. And that'll go through your property. Yep, there you go.
I, I, I think you should. I think you should follow the natural course of the water and quit, quit trying to turn it. Quit, quit invading other. Other watersheds. In a proper manner. There's a natural flow of water and it, it should be followed.
So this route. Is cheaper than going south, because we'd have to, unless we just dumped it into the quarry. Which we need to talk to the DNR about.
It's cheaper for you, but it's, but it's destroying my crop.
For the construction season.
No, right now all the water, the screwed up mess I'm making a ninety degree turn, it's, it's destroying my crop.
So the surface water will still flow south. But the tile water. Would, would take the turn and go. To the west.
Well, I'm, I'm not agreeing to this. It follows, it follows a natural course.
Okay, so you can, if you disagree, you can file, have you filed a written objection yet?
Um, I intend to.
Okay. Cause you'll need to, it'll need to be in writing. And the reason it has to be in writing, all objections is because. To go in the official record of the record, and then if. If someone. Would like to sue, let's say this project moves forward and you objected to it. We, that needs to be in writing that you objected to the project, so that you.
It will be in writing.
To sue, so just. Yep, and everyone has a right to object. You also can write a letter of support. We don't really get many of those, but you can't do it. Yep, and then, yeah, the board can take that objection into consideration, um. I think Cohen's already gone over a remonster instead of seventy percent of landowners on.
Fifty percent.
Or fifty percent of landowners going seventy percent of the land. The project is dead before the board gets a vote on it. We had that happen. Just a couple of months ago, DD forty eight, if any of you has their landowners on forty eight. Few miles, well, few miles southwest of this one. Are any other questions? But then we'll get into the construction, construction season. What that's going to be like for construction season, what the benefits are to drainage, the economics part of it. So there. And there's supplemental handouts, you know, we haven't really talked about. We kind of start off by talking about. The. Background, how the, how the needs of this tile have changed in the last hundred years. Then we go through some benefits, some project costs. And then we do get into. Procedure and then we'll get into construction considerations. We'll kind of go over the construction considerations. Now. If this project goes to bids. We'll send it out to bids. It'll be posted on our website. It'll be sent, published in the paper. We'll email contractors. We typically get. About five to ten contractors to bid on a job like this. Being here in Northern Iowa, we'll get, we'll get some local. Local contractors to bid on it. Um, I've already talked to a few who are interested in a job like this. You are welcome to attend the bid, bid heading, but you won't get noticed on it. And we've got our estimated cost. Typically, we're. Our estimated costs are going to be five to ten percent higher than what the actual bid, low bid comes in. Usually the low bid comes in a little less than what we've estimated it for. If it does come in significantly higher, we can have the option to rebid it. Or change, make some changes. Or we can just bring you guys all back in here and at that point you can see what the new product cost is. You guys can kill it at that point too. So there is always the option to go to bid. Still end the project. Along with that. I recommend construction in the summer. It seems kind of counter, because there's crops out in the field. But you get a, you get a cheaper product in the summer, because contractors like working in the summer more than like working in the winter. Just, it's just easier work. You don't have to break the frost. Things just move a lot smoother. So I like to do construction work in the summer. And also you can, guys are bidding these, they're private tileers, they're going to be doing private tile. So it gives them an opportunity in the summer to do the late tile. Nice mud and frost to deal with. I've already kind of gone over our observation. We will be there a couple of times a week. Checking in. So we'll have our phone. We require them. To take photos of all their connections. So every time they do, there's your connection, they have to take a photo of it. And then. With that. We will mail letters out to all, all of the landowners who are going to be affected. Letting you know when they're going to get started. We asked that the communication is streamlined from us. You talk to us, we talk to the contractor. Instead of you, but it's talking to the contractor, it ends up. Just kind of being more of a mess. We have. A triangle of communication going.
It's also a, a safety factor in terms of it's the contractors. Construction site, they're responsible for safety. If somebody not wearing safety equipment walks on their construction site, they can get in trouble for that. So.
So work area, we typically do fifty feet each side of the proposed tile. So it's a hundred foot wide swath. And what we've recommended is. Paying, district will pay crop damages at one hundred and ten percent of average crop. Yield by the average price received for the year. So we've been recommending. I don't know if that's what you guys in North County have, something similar to that. But that's what I've been recommending. And then along with that. Soil and soil fertility, um. Compaction soil fertility, because there will be some mixing. And we haven't stripped the top soil first and then put the. Playback and put some soil on top, but there still will be some mixing, some fertility issues, releasing rock pickup, some final tillage. We recommend paying two times cash rent. For the, for that additional damage. So you'd get the. The, the crop that you had destroyed, plus you'd get some. Additional damages due to compaction. What we've recommended, uh, but that would all be determined at the completion hearing. The board will get that final decision on how much they want to. Pay for damages. And you can also have, you can also submit your own damages if you think. You're entitled to more compensation or less compensation or something. Else, uh, but we try, the district tries to be fair with the landowners. Let us use, use that, let land. I think that's kind of. Main take was we, the district tries to be fair to the landowners, all landowners, when we're using that land to put the new tile in.
When you're paying damages, the district is kind of paying yourself. So you have landowners who weren't directly impacted, paying landowners who were, so.
If the other, the road crossings, drainage districts are entirely one hundred percent. Funded by themselves. It wasn't like the, you know, city project where they get, they have grant availability or state funding. You guys are a hundred percent responsible for your own. Your. Project cost. We'll move on to the.
So. Uh, I'm going to go over. Kind of more procedural stuff. We talked about assessments and we'll touch briefly on annexation and reclass. Um, so yeah, Jacob, as Jacob was just explaining, landowners pay for the district, uh, themselves. So, uh, what's typical is drainage districts pay for things with drainage warrants, which are basically IOUs. Um, the trustees would set an interest rate. Um, I'm not sure what interest rate we'd be. Setting these days, but interest rates have gone up, so usually drainage warrants kind of go up with them. Um, because counties don't like acting as banks. Um, assessments can be spread over ten to twenty year time periods. Um, we, we're pretty recommending a twenty year, uh, time period for a project of this magnitude. Yeah, and then from a landowner's perspective, uh, it's pretty common to see private financing. It's important to remember that the interest on drainage warrants is simple interest, not compound interest. So it, it doesn't hit you as hard as, uh, a compound interest loan would. Um, and that there may be tax advantages. We're not accountants. We can't give you any official advice, but we'd recommend that you see whoever does your taxes. Because there often can be, uh, tax advantages to both private tile and drainage assessments. Okay, so, uh, this is a hearing over engineers report. There's going to be a separate e-train for annexation and reclass. We have been appointed. To reclassify the district. Um, the existing schedule is from nineteen fourteen, when the district was established. Um, and we have, we have a map on another slide of, of that schedule. Uh, you can see here, so, uh, this is, everything in purple is what's currently assessed. And then how it's shaded is based on how many, uh, the dollars per acre assessed. As you can see. Um, as you can see. In my opinion, it's not a very good schedule at all, and obviously words they can look at, um, you have. Uh, entire, uh, parcels here, like this is assessed at a very high dollar per acre. Because the original assessment was only taking into account that this parcel had four acres within the district. Whereas I think it's pretty obvious that they, they would get more benefit to more than just four acres, based on where they sit. In relation to the tile and within the watershed. Um, so, yeah, that, that is the schedule that's being reclassified, now if we, um, go back. Yeah, so, um, the, the prod, procedurally, those hearings will be a lot like this one. Um, everybody, everybody in the district will get, well, for the annexation, only landowners that are recommended to be annexed will be invited to the hearing. Um, they'll get to object. Um, the, the trustees have the final decision, uh, it's the same thing with reclass, all landowners will be invited, everybody will have the opportunity to object and, and. Yeah, and we've, not input classification, um, we do do the, the brunt of it in creating the schedule, but we do. The law requires having two disinterested landowners, that's landowners who aren't within the district. Who are familiar with the area, so they'd be landowners within Worth County, they're commissioners, and then they act with us and they jointly. Before we have the hearing, they sign off on the schedule too, saying that, to their knowledge, this seems like a fair schedule. So, uh, like I said, current schedule is from nineteen fourteen, we typically measure, measure benefits. Uh, to facilities from proximity, which is how close your land is related, is to the tile, so how easy it is for you to utilize the tile. Uh, use, that's a proportion of the facility that's used, so if you are, uh, up here. You're using this entire upper main, whereas if you're right here, you're only using this portion of that main. So the land up here uses more of it and thus should be assessed higher because of it. Uh, wetness, that goes back to the soil classification map we showed earlier. Um, as to how wet your, your soil is and how much, that basically measures your need for drainage. And then land use, so, um, things that have high need for drainage, like roads, for example. Will get dinged more because they need to take that water off their land more here. Uh, yeah, and then schedules, this is important too, is the existing schedule is for the entire district. Um, once it's reclassified, schedules would be split just based on the facility, so you will only pay for the facility that you utilize. If you're a landowner on lateral five, you will not pay for lateral, any, anything that has to do with lateral four. Um, and so on, but for instance, um, everybody north of here would currently. Um, let's say we do the improvements, everybody in the north area would drain into that lower main that's proposed. And so everybody would pay for the lower main, you just wouldn't pay for any laterals that you aren't using.
Um, so in essence, anyone south of four fiftieth would pay anything for the project.
Correct, they will only pay for the reclassification cost, proportional reclassification cost, they will not pay for anything for the construction.
And why is that being cut off?
Um, so it currently is cut off with that nineteen seventy-seven tile. And then, I mean, it goes south and then there's the quarry area.
Posted over the river ways south.
And I think the quarry broke the tile.
It's still hooked up.
It's still hooked up, and on the county ground in the, in actual quarry, it's, it's just a hole in the ground, right? Yeah, south, south of the county, you know, in, in Trenton's quarry, it's actually just goes, goes into the quarry itself. The assessment they are, but they're not gonna cut the tile itself, the tile's still gonna be there in function as an outlet, yeah. All the, all the stuff that's there is gonna stay there, they're just adding new, new tile.
Yes, yeah, this, this portion here will still drain south and also. Drain it also west.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob, but if, if the lower main improvement does come in, these lands that are south of the improvement would pay something. Because they're being relieved by having that water taken off of them, because they would go from a tenth of show of vision to half and show of vision as well.
Yeah, because we've taken all that water off, so their tile should function better, the existing.
There's no impacts for the landowners down here, because they're already cut off.
The quarry's already cut them.
So.
Yes.
Any question? Okay, we'll talk about this.
So maybe, we did prepare in the engineering reports some preclassification maps. And we. Here's an example with one for the lower main, and these are all estimates, they're all using estimated dollars and they're also. Reflective, assuming that everything's been annexed in, which I don't think is probably what's gonna happen. But it gives you an idea of kind of what, what Colton talked about, your project. The, the proximity, huge wetness and so on, you can see those areas show, you can really see wet, wet spots show up on these maps, they're the. More red area, they're higher assessed, it's probably, probably a good example to see how your dollars compare to your neighbors. If you, the dollars will be different, but it'll give you a good idea about where you kind of sit in the district of these maps. So you can see on the lower main, the highest assessed area, the red area is right here, kind of at the. Lateral five, upper main, where they kind of meet, there's kind of a hill right in here that makes the low lower, but that's your, your highest assessed area. And then as you move away from that, you know, up in here, where it's got that well drained soil, it's got, well, better drained soil. And it's farther away, they're gonna be, they're shades of green and moving closer to it, so you, and all the maps kind of follow that same. Same basic idea. The closer you are to the tile, tiles usually the last spot to start with. You can see that. Banning out.
Yeah.
The way we think of it.
And these will be, both annexation and reclass will have their own hearings with more maps, more details, so, uh, to, to pick through at that time. Um, does anybody have any questions about reclassification or annexation, I know it's not the subject of the hearing, but anything we can answer for you right now?
And we have got several objections to annexation. I would say that those will probably count for the annexation hearing, because they were filed prior to the hearing, we haven't filed the report yet either yet, but. They probably should still count as objections to annexation, they don't. Really count for anything for this meeting though, because for, this is about the tile, if they're objecting to the tile being constructed. We can still count them as being objected to the tile, but technically, since they're not, if you're being annexed, you're not currently in the district and you don't have a vote. Then on if this tile gets proposed or an official vote, the board would still want your letters, want to take under consideration, but officially. If you're not annexed, you're not in the district yet, you don't have an official vote, um, to object, we still. Want to thank you for submitting them, so the board can see that, consider, take that into consideration.
I think most of them were annexation.
Great, so, moving on. We'll just talk, uh, briefly about the benefits of drainage, I'm sure a lot of you are aware of these. Um, but yeah, and also in our supplemental handout, we included, um, an Ohio State professor created a list of nineteen points. On that, on the benefit of the drainage, some of them are a little too granular for my taste, but, uh, they are there and you're supplemental. But yeah, you'll see increased yields, you can get in the field earlier because it's, because it's drier. Um, just increased field access in general, because it's drier, better soil aeration, improved root development. And increased input efficiency, so you can see here, um. You're a wet spring with a higher water table is going to reduce your root development. Compared to a, a spring where you get more drainage, your roots will go down deeper and that'll help your crops not burn out in the summer. So that is, um, even in, even in somewhat drained soils. Uh, you can, you can get a real benefit from drainage, and every, every, uh, voltage that we come across. Corn just really loves to be dry, you'll see yield increases for, um, for drainage, and then down here. Um, I, I took this from a, uh, research paper written at Iowa State's, kind of. Um, going, it, it goes through the entire ecological model of drainage, but they, uh. They, they believe you're gonna use, you'll get it more input efficiency in terms of you'll have to, you will use less nitrogen, uh, than you did before. Um, there's some economic trade-offs, increased nitrate leaching, um, decreased global warming gases. Things that aren't necessarily relevant to a drainage district, but the, the gist of it is you'll use, you'll, you'll need less fertilizer per bushel. And you'll get, you'll get better root development and better yields.
Alright, so yeah, kind of, we'll keep pulling from what Colton said about the yield information, so we've got some studies here. From Midwest, Ontario, where they looked at what kind of yield response you can see from improved drainage. And this would be, so Ohio State, they've been doing studies since nineteen eighty-four. Seeing what kind of yield increase, and you see, uh, silty clay soil out in Ohio, they've seen pretty good yield increases, twenty-five, forty percent. Ten to thirty percent Purdue, Iowa State did a recently study, lots of lost soils, just a little different soil than here, but. It's a six to eight percent yield increase, and then in the eighties they did a study, and that one I. I emailed out of state to get more information about it, I know it wasn't done in northern Iowa, I don't, I wish I knew more about it. And they saw the yield increases, uh, this North Dakota state, it just was completed, was kind of an interesting one, they looked at. So twenty-three hundred fields across the, all the Midwest, just per soybean yields, so they. They generalize all the, looking at, when you isolated the weather patterns and the soil types, what kind of yield increase you could see. Across a really wide, widespread. Soybean yield response to drainage, and they found a seven percent, um, yield increase on average. Um, then just to kind of look at the cost, put things in perspective, I know sticker shock is, it's quite, quite a bit of money to spend. When you look at what they did in nineteen thirteen, when their average assessment at that time would have been eighteen dollars per acre. The average land value of Worth County was sixty-seven dollars an acre, first now it's a little over eleven thousand, this is for constructing cost. You look at a thousand, they were paying for drainage about twenty-seven percent of their land worth, they were paying in drainage. That was, that was taken it from a swamp, so that ten inch doesn't really give you the option to even grow crops, they were probably not growing crops before that, but. Compared to now, with about a nine percent of your land value, or your average corn revenue. This was kind of before corn really took off during World War One, so they were going about eighteen dollars, getting yield to about thirty. Was the county average yield, it sounded for I think forty cents, what the average price was at the time. So they were spending one full crop, now last year's crop. You know, I don't know if we're gonna get prices like that for another, prices have gone down since then, but, you know, you'll get average yield of Worth County and average price. It does look like a better return than what it would have been back in nineteen thirteen, to kind of put things in perspective. But there, there was a lot of money spent in Worth County a hundred years ago to make it what it is today, yeah.
During the same time period, there was more, uh, money and, and dirt moved on installing tile in Iowa than there was on the Panama Canal. When they built it, which is, I, I think that's a crazy fact.
Yeah, we'll move on to the, so here's what we, Iowa State has a tile draining analysis spreadsheet on their website. I encourage, I'd encourage you to, to go on there and kind of punch in your own information, there's a video. Where the professor made it, kind of explains how he came up with the numbers, we just use their numbers exactly as they are, we. We punched in the drainage district's soil classes, so we got forty-six acres of very drained, very poor the drains. So on, how many acres are drained for this, what their corn, what they've put in, in all of this Iowa State's numbers, so they had. Free yield of a hundred and twenty-six, post yield of a hundred and eighty, I think this is old, little old data maybe on the yield information. But, and you saw, when you average that across all the acres, came up with a yield increase of twenty-eight bushel an acre. On average across the whole thing, now your field will be varied, depending on how much tile you existingly have in your top, in your field, and also. What your own situation is with your own crop yields. Um, soybeans did, we did the same thing, we just punched in there what our soil types were. They came up with a ten bushel an acre yield increase, um, and then just following along with the spreadsheet. Expected crop rotation, we put it at a fifty fifty yield increase, I put five dollars in for corn and twelve dollars in for soybeans. You saw an average yield increase, or an average increase of, then you have your additional costs, because you will have additional costs, you'll have. Tile maintenance, you also probably spend a little bit more on fertilizer, because if you're getting a little bit of crop, you're gonna spend a little bit more on. To produce it, hauling, drying, those kind of costs, you produce more, you're gonna have to combine more. We came up with about a hundred and six dollar an acre, increased profit, a hundred dollar an acre soybeans. What I would probably suggest is if you go through the spreadsheet yourself, look at, if you have soil maps the last, say, five or ten years. See what it, what does your land look like, where it's not very well drained, what are you yield there, what's your yield where it's really, where it is well drained. And make that comparison and use those numbers for this, so, let's say you're very poorly drained ground, is yielding right now. Hundred and fifty bushel an acre. And then, but your well drained ground's yielding two-ten. Maybe assume it's gonna get up to, you're gonna assume maybe you get up to ninety, ninety-five percent of that, if you have a fully encompassing tile system. Because we also made the assumption on this that. Control estimate costs, you know, it's five hundred dollars more than what our assessments are, we're, we're assuming that if you haven't. You're gonna put in more tile in your fields because of this, you've got a better outlet, spend another five hundred dollars an acre. Adding to your, your system, we assume some of you probably already have a pattern tile system, some of you don't, but you may wanna, you probably wanna spend more money on your own system. We estimate that at five hundred bucks an acre, pattern tile system probably run you a thousand, twelve hundred bucks an acre. So we're kind of going with the idea that, well, some of you probably already have that. Are there any questions about the yield increase or the benefits, or the, what we've, right, like I said. We, and these are general, this is kind of like a general, get the discussion started, but your individual farm will be. Will be your individual farm, what your, what your operation is, for what your yield is, but we're trying to get you. Starting point that Iowa State does have information available, we'll try to help you out. You can have it, because I think if you look at this, the economic payback was. Uh, we didn't include that, so I think it was around twelve years. If everything works out the way Iowa State's sample farm works.
And this stuff is also, mo, uh, most of it is in the supplemental handout we gave you. Um, it's not in the official report, it's not required in Iowa, in Minnesota, it is required, codified. And that's where we got the idea to include it in our presentation, and so.
Yeah, you guys are actually the first ones to get those. And we do have on here, if the first moves forward, you will need to go to the NRCS office and ask for a well determination. And this is, this is gonna be your biggest individual sticking point. Um, if the NRCS determines that you have wetlands, or let us know, and we will, we'll try to help you. Get that mitigated, but the alternative is, it's kind of a couple of options, one is you can mitigate it, which. Means that you're gonna have to go buy mitigation credits for a wetland somewhere else, and those are expensive. I don't even know if they're actually available even for egg land right now, and two. The other option is you just retire that, that portion of your farm, you retire, let's say that this well here is one point three acres. You just have to retire that one point three acres, you can't farm that, otherwise you have the possibility of getting kicked out of the farm real quick. Hopefully there's not many weather determinations, I know we did get one back that did have swollen, uh, on it. It was some pasture, it was some pasture ground. Here, you don't have to, for privacy sake, I can't request a well determination, it has to be the individual lander, landowner has to do it. And I know it's, it was a big hurdle, a project probably five years ago that was done, DD twenty-one, wellens were a big problem on that district. But it will take a while for them to get that information to you, if you request it. We're gonna have to say about the farm well, I'm ready. If there are any questions or comments, concerns.
Or we'll read objections next.
Anybody got any comments or questions for?
Anyway, we'll go through objection again.
I think you can improve our presentation anyway, see you after the meeting. I think you can improve our presentation anyway. See us after the meeting, please.
Part of the drainage not dry. Um. I'm writing to object to the annexation of our property in drainage district five and a drainage district fourteen. I see no benefit to. Our property since we have tile at our expense, the cost of the main from the northwest end of drainage five is more than. Any good it would produce on us than any other landowner. Miller, Anderson, and Cynthia Anderson.
I don't think reading my writing.
A little bit.
Volume up.
Yeah. Um, then we have a letter from the railroad, the railroad on Zoom.
Awesome.
If they would like to read it themselves. If not, I'll read it.
See, I thought the email said they weren't going to be on Zoom, so that's why they were submitting the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the names of everybody on there.
Okay. Um, I don't think I'm going to read the railroad one because. The land, it's in the public record in Illinois, probably, I'll read it. Thank you for allowing Union Pacific to provide comments to propose project for drainage to fourteen. UP recognizes much of the information. Preliminary, our own investigation. Is preliminary ongoing, believes further dialogue would be beneficial. Um, the report does not contain specific information for UP to provide. Comments on the crossing. However, appears the district would intend to cross UP's right away with an open cut. That this method would likely interfere with UP's railroad operations and would not be acceptable. An alternative method would be required. Additionally, design specifications to understand. The dollar on the railroad may be modification. Given these possibilities, we should update our cost estimate. Um, we also. Object to the project as the desire is increased productivity of farmland. The rationale does not benefit UP to the extent. It benefits other landowners. As a result, UP does not support the proposed project and objects to drainage. Report does not specifically indicate the proposed reclassification of UP. We could recognize the hearing is not set to determine reclassification. However, please note that the UP maintains its own drainage system. And does not seek its property for increased farm yields. Um, that's kind of the gist of it. Um, I will comment, the drainage districts, Kansas up railroads, they're in, it's already in the. Drainage district, um. There is more benefits than just increased productivity. That's just the one we, we focus on. We think that's ninety-five percent of the land.
Mentioned a, with a permit, if you're going to cross that.
We will need to do a permit.
But they, they, they can't object.
They can.
They can try, but they can't legally object anymore, can they?
No, I mean, I've got the permit. We did a project last year and I was able to get a permit from them. They, they charged us for it. For the, for the permits, but, um. But we were able to get, get the permit for it. Um. We should be able to get across. It may take some time, okay, from a permitting standpoint, but we will be able to get through it. This is from Dan Lowe. Is Dan Lowe here today?
Wow.
Wow. Okay. Uh, we are submitting this letter in objection to the engineer's report on parcel. Twenty-one point seven acres. We request that we are not annexed into this district. This line, this is what they're saying. It would not benefit us financially. The fact that we got nine bushel acre corn this year, which is low, but somewhat normal. We each.
That is what she done.
What else? Walzer, Walzer?
Yep.
It's just here?
They're on.
Okay. Would you, Dennis, would you like to read this or would you like me to?
Might not add a line.
I'll let you.
Oh, okay. What did he say? Go ahead, read it.
Go ahead, read it.
Um, I've submitted this letter in objection to the proposal, repairs and improvements for parcel listed, uh, two point nine acres. This land is very sandy. No drainage is needed. No drainage will be needed in the future and no crop production benefit. Uh, another parcel with two point six acres. This land is very sandy. No drainage is needed. No drainage will be added and no crop production benefit due to soil. We request that these acres be removed. Um, Deborah Root Reivers?
They're, they're on here too.
Deborah, would you like to read your objection?
You can do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. I object to the annexation reclassification, which affects the following parcels. The acres on the east side of Bevan Avenue have no outlet. The natural flow of water runs west of the ditch and there is no outlet. Almost all acres on the west side of Pheasant are in CRP and will continue to be in. My lifetime, the farm is very sandy, which drains natural. For these reasons, annexation or reclassification would be no benefit to the farm. Um, I think so. She's on the proposed eighteen inch lateral, I think. Um, I'm. Is Kim Berg available? Tim Berg here today?
Murphy.
Bergy, okay. I'm writing to submit my removal. I'm a DD five and feel there's no future benefit for me. I think he's also on that proposed eighteen inch lateral. Um. Um. Ruben Foley, Ruben Foley here. Foley?
Foley.
I received a notice on hearings and proposed repair. My parcel on board is the southern property. It's DD fourteen. Five zero range going north and fourteen. I see no reason to be annexed. Do not wish to be annexed. I think he is south by the quarry.
Yep. Southeast.
Hello? Paul and Connie Hogan? Did I?
Yep.
No, he, okay. Um, I am writing this letter because we will not be able to attend. Uh, property of eighteen thirteen Central Avenue alongside a highway one oh five is within the city limits. Property sits on sandy soil like most in Northwood. We are expressing objection. We need. Uh, to improve the drainage efficiency capacity. The past twenty years we have lived there, I have not experienced a bad crop. Too much moisture, more to drought. This would be in no way to improve our thirteen acre corn yield or increase our property value. The only way we wish to be included is to help on the project. It's a waste of money. We are also expressing not to be annexed. Thank you for allowing us to express our objection as we have a family planned over Thanksgiving. We will attend the next meeting in a good person. Um, is there any other, any other objections that would like to be filed at this time?
Now, the one person on the call was going to answer.
Yes.
How do you welcome, how do you welcome students out of there in Texas?
I can.
Can they email me?
Yes. That could be, that could be soon.
Or, or the hearing that we can send you.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, is there any? The board has the option to vote now and do, to vote to do yes or no on projects. Board also has the option to continue this hearing and you could take that information that you got today or. And you could go meet with your family or. Meet with people who are interested and then come back and we could have another meeting in which the board could, could vote. Is there any, is there any desire to continue this hearing or do you guys want to just?
Now, you said a separate hearing will be for annexation. Yes. Classification and annexation, yes.
Well, do we need to continue it so that they can get their objections in?
For.
For the reclass?
No, the one that was on Zoom.
The one on Zoom. We, we could continue it for him to be able to object. Um. I don't think legally you have to wait for him either though. If you'd like to keep, if you'd like to go right now.
No.
Question I got, I guess, server that's involved is. Parts of this project, yes, no, all the, I mean, I, I know it's a lot. You want to think about it? Give it two weeks, come back?
My opinion is the one, the lower, I would like to get that done going across the railroad and across. We got the state and the railroad going to pay for it. That's one thing I think that would be nice to, if, if anything, would be nice to get in. And I think that would. Maybe benefit.
So you'd like to do that fit and kick things, isn't that what that is?
Yeah, that, that is the lower.
That's three hundred dollars.
The one that Mike is. Uh, to me, you have the city or the state and the railroad going to pay for it. It'd be nice to get that in and live for another day. That's, that's.
Takes some pressure off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
The only part I'm objecting to is that retention of drainage district five.
And you got that in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That lateral.
Yeah, and I think reading objections.
Why can't everything just come back in two weeks? Uh, just because everybody needs to process all of this.
Yeah, we can. Well, yeah. Any other comments or questions on this report for the engineers?
Come and tell you what my land is, what the cost, what my total cost would be for that project, I mean, project or.
We have it for the, the pre-class maps. We have the lower main. We have them all broken up. So you'd have to add them on top of each other.
Right.
But it'll give you a ballpark figure.
That's what I would like to want to, is what each one, seven months time costs. So, yeah.
It's going to change based on what lands end up actually annexed.
Hmm.
If we want a spark.
I'm saying, I'd like to know the total. But it's pretty good. They, I think, needs to come back and come back.
Okay, I will, uh, is there any other comments? Otherwise I'll close this public hearing. Anybody got any comments?
Just not closing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll motion to continue the public hearing.
So.
You know, two weeks from today.
December eleventh?
Eleventh. December eleventh, nine.
Nine thirty.
Thirty.
And that's the only notice you're going to get is right here.
This is your notice today.
You're not going to get a letter on this or nothing.
Yep.
December eleventh at what time?
Nine thirty.
Somewhere in this building.
Monday, December eleventh.
We need a motion.
I had a motion for that.
I got a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, if there isn't any other comments or questions, I am going to take a move to close the public hearing. So. We don't need to hear that.
Okay. Then we're just going to.
You just go back to your regular meeting. Then we're just going to reconvene the regular session and I'll take a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.
You just like to say.